Also, distinguished guests and our people on Zoom, good morning. We'll get started here. I know we got a lot of issues to cover. I think we have one honoring, so we'll do that soon as we get through the morning routine here. So we're gonna call this meeting to order at 10:38. Councilwoman Sears, can you give us an opening prayer?
Good morning, everybody, and good morning to listening audience and anybody on Zoom and the audience in here. Good morning to council, executive board. Heavenly Father, I ask for blessings today for our people throughout the reservation and throughout the world. We have people out there suffering, Lord, and I ask that you take care of them, keep them, keep them safe. We ask that you feed our hungry. We ask that you take care of our people and especially our people suffering with addictions, Lord. With that, you know, I believe that with your mercies, Lord, we can heal our people, bring them together throughout this world. Today, we are facing a terrible administration of our U.S. government, and it's the innocent people throughout the world. With that, Lord, you know, take care of everybody, and I bless everybody here and bless everybody that's listening. With that, Lord, in Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Oh, whoa, beloved, Councilwoman. Yes, definitely, very good. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Kelly, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Good morning, everybody. Looks like we're gonna have a long day according to all the two-thirds. Let's keep everything positive, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Real quick, can, um, can we, um, take a moment of silence to remember our children? Today's, um, all our boarding school children that passed away?
Yes, yes, we can do that. Also, I wanna recognize, you know, Mr. Ernie Stevens, those of you that knew him, he's a big name in gaming industry. He passed away, I believe his services are Friday. So, and I think that was mentioned at one of the committee meetings to send some flowers or, and our condolences that way. So we'll have to make that arrangement somehow to get it down there. So at this time, we'll take a moment of silence. Okay. Secretary, roll call.
Just wanna say good morning to each and every one of you and all the oyate who are listening to us. I pray for a good day for everyone. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. George Dreamer Junior. B. Frandl. Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
David Poyer. Bo Little White Man.
Yo.
David Kelly.
Present.
Anna Halverson. I believe she's going to be late. Jackie Sears.
Here.
Donroy Ghost Bear is excused. Garfield Still. Troy Little.
Here.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Present.
Lyle Weston.
Present.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Here.
Tyler Lunderman is excused. Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Here.
Craig Dillon. Richard Greenwall Senior. James Cross.
Present.
Sixteen present, two absent, two excused, one late. Well, we did establish quorum. Okay, so, uh, we have one honoring here, and I'm gonna turn it. Okay, I believe, uh, the Pine Ridge reps are gonna be handling this one. I'll turn it over to you.
She's not here. You wanna hold off till she gets here? Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll come back to the honorings when she gets here. Moving on to our next agenda item is complaints. Exclusion?
Is that a law and order?
No, it's under. So yesterday, when we had the no-show for the hearing and the lack of quorum, it was a consensus that you were going to bring back the issue to make a final ruling on the exclusion response.
Councilwoman Poyer.
I'll motion to put that on the agenda.
It's on the agenda already. So was that a motion, Councilwoman Poyer? Yeah, go ahead, Councilman.
I believe under the, excuse me, under the advisement of the ALJ, because the no-show of the person who was being excluded, we would be able to make that motion to move forward with the exclusion. So that would be my motion.
Okay, did we have a second? Second by Councilman Randall? Yes. Call for the vote. Yes, go ahead, Councilman. Chair, for a proven agenda, if we can put this stuff on, there needs to be two-thirds of it on?
So, yeah, so Mr. Poyer is correct. There was, um, those were reversed. But, um, so you do have to do the approval of the agenda, but you don't have to two-thirds it on because originally it was a complaint. And then, um, at the, as Ms. Spotted Bear said, under the advisement of the ALJ, to go forward with a, a motion.
I, I know, but I thought her motion was to approve the agenda. What about these committee things that have to go on?
No, she made a motion to go forward with the exclusion. So we'll hold off on that one until you do the approval of agenda. So those two on your agenda, just switch them back.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So are, we're gonna add two-thirds now?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one from education. It's, um, motion made by Ronald Randall, second by Jackie Sears to continue the suspension of the American Horse School Board to pursue a financial review within thirty to forty-five days and forward this resolution to tribal council. Motion to add that to the agenda.
Okay.
Two-thirds.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, two no. Motion carried.
Thank you. Then Chair, I have six from HHS. Um, the first one is resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the disenrollment of Ashley Ferguson from Oglala Sioux Tribe membership. Motion of two-thirds.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no. Motion carried. Okay, two. Two no. Correction. Thank you.
Next one is resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the disenrollment of Alicia Sanchez from Oglala Sioux Tribe membership. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilwoman Sears, Councilman Little.
Little.
Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, three no. Motion carried.
Next one is the resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the disenrollment of Ignatius Young from the, excuse me, Ignatius Young Bear from Oglala Sioux Tribe membership. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yeah.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, three no. Motion carried.
Next one is resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the disenrollment of Sheena Sanchez from Oglala Sioux Tribe membership. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, three no. Motion carried.
Next one is resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council approving the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027 Master Health Contract Number HHS-I-241-2025-00002 between Oglala Sioux Tribe and the United States of America Department of Health and Human Services Indian Health Services for the period October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2028. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yeah.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Unanimous sixteen. Motion carried.
The last one is resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council to cancel the shared facility agreement and request full fiscal year 2026 Indian Health Services funding. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Unanimous sixteen. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Councilman Rosales.
Thank you, Chair. Economic and Business Development Committee has six, two-thirds items to add. Um, first one, ordinance of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe rescinding ordinance number 2455. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Cross. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Can, uh, can you remind me of what ordinance 2455 is? I'm drawing a blank. What, the opres? No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
No.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Bo Little White Man? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Ten yes, five no, one not voting. Motion failed. Motion failed. Uh, just a reminder, uh, the two-thirds for sixteen present is eleven, eleven votes.
Okay, moving to the second one. Resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe rescinding resolution number 25-125, establishing the Prairie Wind Casino Task Force. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yep.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one not voting. Motion carried.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my third item here is resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe to request the United States acquire the property purchased from Marvin Algrass in 2019 into trust status for the benefit of the tribe in amending Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council Resolution Number 23-119 to correct a clerical error. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Dillon. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh-huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Troy Little?
Yes.
Unanimous sixteen. Motion carried.
Thank you, Chair. My fourth item is ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe waiving the payment of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Enrollment Rights fees for the planning and construction of the government service building in the Porcupine District. I'll motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Poyer. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Julian Spotted Bear?
No.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
No.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah, no.
Troy Little?
No.
Seventeen yes, nine no, or seven yes, nine no. Sorry. The motion failed. Motion failed.
Okay, I got my fifth item here, resolution of the Ololosu Tribal Council of the Ololosu Tribe authorizing the executive committee to finalize and approve a professional service agreement for new markets, tax credits with the project team. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Right. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Laya Weston.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
No.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Eleven yes, five no, motion carried.
Thank you Chair. My last item here, the resolution of the Tribal Council of the Ololosu Tribe approving an employment contract with Ed Fagan to serve as general manager of the Prairie Wind Casino. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Cross, Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Laya Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
B. Frandl.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Fifteen yes, one no, motion carried.
Thank you Chair, that's it for Economic Business Development Committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you Chair. The Finance Committee is requesting two-thirds item of the Diabetes Program. Hold on. I'm looking for the action. Reinstating the Director Position and the Database Clerk Position for the Diabetes Program, SDPI. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Second by Councilwoman Sears. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
Laya Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
No.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
No, no.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Seven yes, nine no, motion failed. Councilwoman Spotted Bear, is that the only one?
I apologize, that's all we have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, whenever we get to the Treasurers Report, can we get BIA over here also to kind of give us a status report on some of the issues with the audit and things like that? If we can have them here.
Okay. Councilman Poyer.
Chair.
Yes.
When we get started, I think we need to have discussion on if there's a shutdown before we start anyplace on the agenda, so after it's approved, I'd like to have that first on the agenda because, you know, we have some programs that are cost reimbursements. And if they don't get any funding, then programs can't move on.
Okay. Two-thirds, or you want it?
Yeah, two-thirds put it out for discussion anyway.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Poyer. Well, we can...
All motion to approve, Chair, if there's no other additions.
Wait, let's run Davy's motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Dillon, second by Councilman Dillon. Secretary, call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yeah. Yes.
Laya Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross. Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
No.
Jeremy Rosales.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Twelve yes, four no, motion carried. Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle to approve agenda. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Laya Weston.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon. B. Frandl.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Troy Little.
Yes.
Unanimous sixteen, motion carried. Okay. So... I don't think we have our honor... The person we're honoring is not here yet, so I think we can jump right into the discussion of of a possible shutdown. For all of you that been keeping up on the news, there's a stalemate here. Democrats don't seem like they're moving, or they're pushing, and the Republicans are not responding, so it's kind of like a stalemate right now. Right now, I'm trying to see if one of the attorneys could come online from Hobstrass just to give us the latest. I tried to catch up on news this morning, there's watching about six channels at once. There was, Trump came on with the all the military officials this morning. Kind of took over on what the discussion was about. We did send out letters to our congressionals asking them to save our programs. And things like that, just to put a bug in their ear. And we also reached out to other tribal leaders to do the same. At Great Plains level. Yesterday, for those of you sat in that Zoom that National Congress of American Indians put on, a lot of questions were asked on there. But to me, it sounded like, you know, those things that are protected by treaties are not affected. Now, all those other programs, yes, they might be affected, Councilman Poyer, but we don't know which ones exactly. So this is why, to me, this is why I always push treaties, we have to stand on those treaty obligations. Because it is law, and if you follow politics, that's that's one thing that's on the list, is, you know, to keep those key agencies that are protected by law as a priority on the list. And that's where we gotta keep reminding our congressionals when things come down to wire that they have a treaty obligation to uphold. So as far as right now, there's still a stalemate, and they got until, I believe, midnight to come up with something, but it's all political game right now, and neither side is budging. That's what I picked up so far. But I'm constantly watching. Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
I guess my main concern is we have programs that are cost reimbursement. And I know water maintenance is one, but I don't know of any others. So if there's a shutdown, them people, I don't know, those employees of ours, what do we do? Because, you know, if we don't get reimbursed, where's that money going to come from? You know, and I don't know, I really don't know the status of our school systems. If they have enough money to carry on till this is over with, are they included in the funding or not? You know, I think that's a concern of mine, because as many water breaks as we have without any employees, water will keep running, nobody will get it fixed.
Yeah. And just to respond, and I'll turn it over to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
So we were asking some of those questions. You know, and I asked the Zoom, on the Zoom meeting with NCAI, if those are going to affect employees that are under treaty obligations. They said it shouldn't affect any of the employees or things like that, but again, we really don't know. That's why I asked for if we drew down all our all our funding. I didn't get a full status report, but I got it verbally, and I was told that we drew down all our funds for the Ololosu Tribe. But to answer that, I'm not sure. I can't tell you that, huh?
But BOR is reimbursable, reimbursement. It's not forward funding like the rest, so that, you know, that's a concern.
Yeah, yeah. And then we got BIA coming too, so we can also ask BIA and the Treasurer those questions. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
You know, I don't think we want to stir things up too much, because I think some of us sat in here yesterday, listened to NCAI on what was going to happen. And BOR is cost reimbursement, but I'm hoping that, like you said, money was drawn down. I think when the Treasurer does her report, I think we'll find out more as to how many programs drew down their funds. Because today, you know, it really sounds like there is going to be a shutdown. And I think they keep telling us yesterday that IHS would not be affected because of the treaty, but also, you know, language that was proposed, you know, way back about IHS, when something like this happens, are going to always be the ones that wouldn't get affected. But I was hearing yesterday that they might be affected too. It would be good to get a report from our CEO at Indian House Service on that, but I think we should wait until the Treasurer comes on and see what type of funds were drawn down for all of the programs, because it kind of sounds concerning. I know there's some things that Mr. Dillon, Councilman Dillon, wants to go into executive and talk about. I don't really want to say too much over the air, but it is out there, and I think there is some programs that will get affected. And, you know, I think we should wait and hear from those, the BIA Superintendent and our Treasurer, and see what's going on there. You know, because it is, I could say some programs, but I don't want to say it out openly, because, you know, I'm not going to get them all worried about anything. You know, Mr. Randall over there said something a while back about, well, we're survivors, you know, we survived everything. And I think that our tribes did. You know, I think we learned to survive. And, but now, in today's age, you know, we're in a crisis situation when it comes to this administration, who is not really, don't really care to listen, it seems like. So I think we should, and I think it needs to constantly be told to our delegation about it. Even though they're Republicans, you know, they need to listen to us too. And so I just wanted to share that, but I think the Treasurer, I'm sure, will tell us what kind of money was drawn down, plus the BIA Superintendent. Because it is concerning. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you, President. I'm going to ask respectfully if we end the discussion. I know I reported that I went to Washington DC two weeks ago, and this was the very conversation we were having there with the NCAI. And we foreseen this coming, so we did take action at that time with the Treasurer and our accountants upstairs in preparation for this. Last week in Finance Meeting, they did, some of the groups that were here did hear... Last week in finance meeting, they did, some of the groups that were here did hear that money was drawn down, all available funding was drawn down. So in order to ensure that we have streamlined communication, I asked that we wait until the treasurer and all participating bodies are present so that they can answer those questions.
Any other questions? No. Go ahead, Councilman Kelly.
You know, I agree. On several occasions, I have come forth and asked the comptroller, the treasurer, and this body, what is our contingency plan on on a few committees and in council? And now we're down to the last hour, trying to solve and fix the problems. Once again, we're in crisis mode when we should have been way prepared. So I don't see why we're having this dialogue, we should have had it already resolved.
Okay, well, we'll wait for the treasurer. When she gets here with her report. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item, complaints, exclusion. Sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
Is this going to be by ordinance or is it by the Constitution? By ordinance? Just exclusion, exclusion?
Resolution.
Oh, by resolution? Because then I was wondering, you know, because when we banish our our members, they don't get a hearing. But non-members, they get a hearing. So I was wondering if we could make that amendment to take out hearings for non-members too.
There is, they do get a hearing.
Oh, I remember the last time we banished a bunch of people, they didn't get hearings. We banished them for five years and they didn't get hearings.
Go ahead now.
So everybody gets an opportunity, but they have to request it within seventy-two hours of the banishment. So if they don't request it, there's no hearing. And Mr. Calderon, or however you say his name, made that request. He's the only one out of all of them that has ever done that, so. But they're all entitled to that same process under the ordinance.
Recognize Councilwoman Halverson at eleven thirty-one.
So if they go to find him, they go to find it to serve him and they can't find him nowhere and they can't contact him anymore, that just doesn't end it, right? I mean, we could still move forward based off that information, right? To our attorney? I mean, just because he moved or left doesn't mean that, and we can't get a hold of him, doesn't mean he just gets to come and go as he pleases still, right? So we can move forward with our exclusion today, right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Greenwell, he was notified by certified letter and by email, because that's how I received his response was, well, he faxed it in from Gordon. But he does check his email, because I put a delivery receipt on it, so I know that he's been reviewing them. So he is contact, he is reachable. Uh huh, and yesterday, or the day before, I talked with Captain Crow Eagle, and him and John Long have been working together to try and locate him too. And so, yeah, they weren't able to. He never showed up to the hearing yesterday. And yesterday, the ALJ basically said that because he did not show up for his hearing, that he in a way forfeited his right to have a hearing. And so that, but because there was no quorum, that she recommended that it be brought back to council today, so you guys could officially exclude him. And Rayanne did draft a resolution to that.
Did you hear that?
So I could read it, read the resolution. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe affirming the issuance of an emergency order of exclusion for Jeremy Daniel Calderon from the Pinewood Indian Reservation. You have the section sixteen clause, the article four clause. You need to insert the sovereignty clause. Whereas the tribal council is further empowered under article four sections one, or I and W and article one of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Constitution and ordinance twenty-five dash fourteen to exclude non-members from the Pinewood Indian Reservation. And whereas on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, the tribal council voted to exclude and remove Jeremy Daniel Calderon, a non-member from the Pinewood Indian Reservation. And whereas on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, a hearing was held at the request of Mr. Calderon to reconsider the exclusion and removal order. And whereas the respondent failed to appear for the hearing, the tribal council has determined that it is in the best interest of the Oyate to uphold the exclusion and removal order. Now therefore be it resolved that the tribal council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe affirms the exclusion and removal order issued on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five shall remain in full force and effect and that this matter is closed. Certification. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Second by Councilman Greenwell. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
No.
Norman standing soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Lya Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears? Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon? B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
Anna Halverson?
No.
Troy Little?
Thirteen yes, two no, two not voting, motion carried.
No honorary here yet. We don't have anything from the districts. I didn't receive anything.
Okay, we'll move on to the districts. I don't see any districts here. At this time, we'll move on to the secretary's office. And I'll turn it over to the secretary.
Thank you. Before you today, I have tribal council minutes, August sixth, twelve, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, requesting to be approved.
Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Greenwell. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Norman standing soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Lya Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer? James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Sixteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Thank you. Also before you, executive committee minutes for August sixth, thirteenth, twenty, and twenty-second.
Motion by Councilman Poyer. Second by Councilman Little White Man. Call for the vote.
David Kelly?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, can you repeat that?
Yes.
Thank you. Norman standing soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior?
Yes.
Lya Weston?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh, huh.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
B. Frandl?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Sixteen yes, one not voting, motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to comptroller. They went after him. Last day was yesterday, wasn't it? Yeah. Okay. All right, moving on. So at this time, we'll, the treasurer here. Well, take five minutes here. It's close to lunch, but it's not set up, so we'll go to lunch after the treasurer's report, so take five, we'll resume in five minutes.